I'd like to call this to be a simple work session to order. If we could have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Francisco.
Here.
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 May I?
May I?
May I?
Here. We have Spanish interpretation services and if, Carlos, you can come up and make an announcement.
Yeah, let me begin now when we're making the announcement by any means. We do have in some places interpretation in Spanish and we have the button which is wireless so that you can really output it and see now what you want to and hear all the information in Spanish. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before I turn it over to our city attorney, just so you know how this evening should work, we'll have a brief presentation by our city attorney. We'll have an opportunity for council members to ask questions and then we really want to hear from you, so that's what the mic is for. We are televising this, so make sure, please, your microphone is on. We don't have a clock in here, so I'm going to keep to the regular two-minute cycle and you can wave times to others if you want more time, like we usually do. And you've heard this before, but if you haven't, this is the sound when your two minutes are up. Let's see if I can get it. Hold on. Where'd it go? There we go. All right. If that doesn't make you go away from the podium, I don't know what will. Okay, so, but with that, why don't we start with Mr. Cullon. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I've got about a 10-minute presentation I'd like to run through to set the stage. It follows the staff report that you were given and let me begin. Technical difficulties. The clicker is not working. All right, so tonight we'll talk about three broad areas. A look at the state and local legal framework for district and other types of elections. A look at the types of voting systems that are around in California, and then a very brief discussion of the California Voting Rights Act. To begin with, the state constitution grants a chartered city like Santa Barbara what it describes as plenary, meaning full authority, to establish and control the manner of your elections. That's a power that only chartered cities have. General law cities are required to follow one of the forms of elections that are in the state general laws. What that means is that you've got a wide array of flexibility to craft an election system of your choosing, but a charter amendment's required to change the voting system. The current charter in Santa Barbara prescribes at-large elections, and if you want to pick a more creative system or a different system, you will need voter approval. Ordinarily, a charter election should be consolidated with a statewide general election, but there are new provisions in the state law that allow you to do it at other times. The charter amendment that goes to the voters also needs to spell out how you're going to establish district boundaries. You don't need to present the actual boundaries in the charter amendment, but you need to decide whether you're going to do it yourselves, which is done by most California cities that have district elections, or whether you're going to use a redistricting commission or other kind of citizen body to help with the process of drawing district boundaries. The only rule for drawing district boundaries is that the population of each district needs to be as nearly equal as possible, and I mean within very narrow tolerances. So 13,400 versus 13,500, not 13 versus 15,000, pretty tight tolerances. Okay. There are five types of voting systems that we're going to talk about. The first is the at-large voting system that's currently in use in Santa Barbara. Okay, as I mentioned, at-large voting is currently used in Santa Barbara. The key features are twofold. One, candidates may reside anywhere in the city, and voters from anywhere in the city get to vote on any of the candidates who are running for the open seats. Some of the pros and cons are, as described up on the slide. When you look at the relatively neutral analysis of at-large voting, one of the pros that's often described is that each council member considers everyone in town to be a constituent, and in fact, they are because each constituent in town votes for all council members. At-large voting also discourages the balkanization of power, and by that I mean when you have district elections, there is a tendency for the elected officials from those districts to focus only on the needs of their home district. And so competition for money, public improvement competition, we're having all kinds of technical difficulties. Competition for money or public improvements can become apparent among the different council districts. At-large voting is also used in a majority of California cities. And by most recent counts, about 440 of the 480 cities in California use at-large voting. Cons, at-large voting may dilute minority voting power when there is racially polarized voting. Now, I'm going to use that term racially polarized voting again when we're talking about the Voting Rights Act, so let me define what it means. And this is according to the City of Palmdale case that just came out yesterday. That is the first appellate case in California dealing with a Voting Rights Act case that has gone to trial. The court there said racially polarized voting occurs when members of a protected class vote for candidates that are different from the rest of the electorate. All that means is that the members of the minority group would tend to choose a different candidate than the majority. From district voting is another option. That means that the candidates have to reside within geographically drawn districts, but the voters at large elect those candidates. So the restriction doesn't compel the voters within a district to vote only for candidates within their district. They can vote for a candidate from anywhere in the city. Some of the pros. Again, each council member would consider all of the voters to be their constituents. There's an assurance that there's geographical diversity among the council members, and that may be important if there is a minority concentration in a particular geographic location within the city. So it's one way of kind of backing your way into assuring greater minority representation if, in fact, you have geographically compact minority districts, which I don't know whether that's the case in Santa Barbara or not. Cons, again, from district voting can dilute minority voting power when there's racially polarized voting because, again, the voters at large elect all of the candidates. By district voting is the preferred choice under the California Voting Rights Act. It requires the candidates to live in a specified geographic district, and it allows only the voters from that geographical district to vote on that candidate. It's used in all the big California cities. Everything from Los Angeles down to Bakersfield and now Anaheim are using district elections. A number of smaller to medium-sized cities are also using by-district elections. I highlighted those in my report to you. The pros, it assures evenly distributed geographical representation because all the districts are the same size, and it may provide a greater opportunity for the election of minority candidates where a minority group resides in a geographically compact area. In other words, if you can draw a district that is majority-minority, it would increase the likelihood of a minority candidate being elected from that district or by that district. Cons, it can deprive district residents of representation because of conflicts of interest. As you know, under the Political Reform Act of 1974, council members who live near a particular project or public improvement may be disqualified from voting on that project or public improvement. As a result, the voters within that district may be deprived of the say given to them by the very candidate they elected to represent their interests. District elections can also promote the balkanization of power because it's natural to expect the elected officials who come from the district to focus their primary attention on achieving enhanced services and public improvements for that district. Instant runoff or ranked choice voting is used in combination with district elections in order to assure that a 50% or greater majority votes for anyone who makes it to the city council. In other words, rather than having a primary that winnows the field down to two candidates, a ranked choice or instant runoff election would use a specialized form of ballot to allow you to number in order the candidates you prefer. I've put an example of a ranked choice ballot up on the screen, and it, I think, is self-explanatory. You number the order in which you prefer the candidates, and if the number-one candidate, in this case, candidate D, did not get 50% of the vote, the elections officials would go down the line to the next preferred candidate on each ballot to determine whether or not there was a 50% majority at the second-choice level, and would continue doing that until one candidate had 50% of the votes. It's used in the San Francisco Bay Area, in San Francisco, Oakland, and Berkeley, and San Leandro. Cumulative voting is not in use anywhere in California at this point in time. Candidates can reside anywhere. Voters can vote for any candidate regardless of where either of them resides, but the voter can vote either singly or cumulatively by assigning more than one vote to a given candidate. So, oops. The cumulative ballot would look like this. If there were three open seats, each voter would have three votes, and they could vote for all of those on one candidate, or they could spread them around. Cumulative voting was recently included as part of the settlement of Santa Clarita's voting rights lawsuit. It's subject in that case because Santa Clarita is a general law city to court approval, but it would be possible for a chartered city to adopt cumulative voting by an election of the people. Unlike district voting, it might provide a greater opportunity for minority candidates when there is not a geographically compact minority district. In other words, if the minority interest group is spread out all around town, district elections wouldn't do them much good in getting their preferred candidate elected. With cumulative voting, if minority interest groups are spread out around town, they can still consolidate their votes to elect a preferred minority candidate, and it assumes Mayor Schneider and Councilmember White proposed a hybrid, which is well within the city's authority to approve. That hybrid called for four council members being elected by district and the mayor and two council members being elected at large. Most frequently in California, when you see hybrids, they revolve around the election of the mayor. In many cities, all the council members are elected by district, and the mayor is elected at large. In other cities, all of the council members are elected by district, and the mayor is appointed from amongst the council members. Let's talk about the California Voting Rights Act. It creates the ability for a minority group to bring a lawsuit when they can establish that their votes are weakened by a combination of two things: at-large elections and racially polarized voting. That's all you need to show. It differs from the federal law in that the federal law requires the ability to create a geographically compact minority district. So the California law, which was enacted in the early 2000s, was specifically intended to make it easier to compel district elections in California. As I mentioned earlier, racially polarized voting simply means that minority voters would tend to vote for a different candidate than the majority group. So it's a very simple showing to make. In Santa Barbara, where you have 38% Hispanic and Latino voters, according to the 2010 federal census, excuse me, 38% residents of Hispanic or Latino heritage, according to the 2010 census, it is very possible that racially polarized voting might be shown. District elections are the only clear remedy for a Voting Rights Act lawsuit. Although Santa Clarita included cumulative voting as part of a settlement, the mere adoption of cumulative voting by the voters in Santa Barbara through a charter amendment wouldn't necessarily insulate you from a Voting Rights Act lawsuit. With that, I'll turn it over to you for questions, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I know, Ms. Murio, you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Cullon. When you were talking about cumulative voting, could we do a combination of district election and cumulative, or cumulative is better for when there's at-large?
Cumulative is designed for an at-large situation.
Okay. And then, can I ask about, you were talking about districts must be as nearly equal in population as possible, and I've watched at the county level after the census when they do redistricting, and they talk about communities of interest. Is that something that would play into our drawing of districts?
I'm not sure what you mean by communities of interest. The examples I've seen in my limited research have been based simply on population, and in other words, not drawn necessarily with the intention of creating a minority-majority district.
Okay. And then, a lot of people have been talking to me about even-year elections, that there's more voters, and I don't see you referring to that in here. Is that part of the California Voting Rights Act world and voting? I mean, not voting, but the decision, the court decisions?
No, it's not part of the California, even-year elections are not part of the California Voting Rights Act. However, many of the settlements of California Voting Rights Act cases have involved a switch to even-year elections along with the imposition of district elections.
Okay.
So they're often combined.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You said that it was easy to establish racially polarized voting, but since voting is secret by secret ballot, how is it easily, easy to establish that?
Mayor Schneider, Councilmember Hotchkiss, it may be easy to establish when you have a large percentage, as Santa Barbara does, of minority voters. In order to establish it, you end up doing a statistical analysis based on the precincts and the census data of the precincts, because you can't do a direct analysis because our ballots are, of course, secret. So it gets easier to establish racially polarized voting as you have a larger and larger minority population in a community.
But if that population doesn't vote in the numbers or proportion to which they are members of the population, how, what do you do then? Now we've got a sort of apples-oranges deal here.
Well, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, you are correct that the plaintiffs in a Voting Rights Act lawsuit would still need to show that the minority voters were voting essentially as a block in favor of a minority candidate. So that determination of racially polarized voting is still important, but it's inferred when you have a large population of minority voters. It can be inferred from the statistical analysis that's done.
So if you could not show that a minority population voted for, in large measure, for one candidate, would there no longer be a case for going to district elections?
Correct. You need to show two things under the Voting Rights Act: at-large elections and racially polarized voting.
And so that remains, one of those remains a question. We have at-large elections, but we don't know if we have racially polarized voting.
That's correct. You'd need to retain a demographic expert to know for sure whether you have racially polarized voting.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's all for questions. We have speaker slips, and just so people know, this is a work session, so there won't be any decisions made up here with the exception of if a majority of council wants to direct staff to come back at a future council meeting with some specific proposal. That could happen, and just in terms of, Mr. Cullon, in terms of a timeline, if there was a desire by four or more members here to put something on this November, it would have to be decided upon pretty quickly. Could you tell us what kind of timeline that could look like? And if, and I don't know if that's what's going to happen, but if it did, you know, just to give the public an idea of how much time we're talking about.
I can, Madam Mayor. The city clerk advises me that the county has a deadline of June 26th for consolidation with the fall ballot. That would put June 24th as the last council meeting where you could take action by resolution to put something on the ballot.
And so if there were a majority of council who wanted to do so, do you see that happening at one council meeting or a combination of council meetings depending on all the pieces that need to be? Can we do it all in one council meeting on the 24th, or do we need something ahead of time?
Madam Mayor, it could be done all at once. If you wanted to do it in more than one council meeting, I could certainly accommodate that. The drafting process for my office would take a large number of hours, but obviously, if it's a priority, we can make the time to get it done.
But not essential? Not essential to have two council meetings? We could do everything that needs to be done for the county, by the county deadline, in one meeting?
That's right.
Okay, okay. Okay, so with that, we're going to go to public comment, and thank you all again for being here. We'll start with Ted Tedesco and to be followed by Wayne Scholes. And I'll, when you start talking is when I'll start the time.
Thank you very much. Mayor and members of the city council and staff, I'm going to mention my experience, but only because it's relevant to the issue tonight. I was a city manager for 15, 21 years in three cities, including Boulder, Colorado, and San Jose, California. And after that, I worked for American Airlines, where one of my responsibilities was to relate to over 250 cities where we had business: airlines, airports, whatever. So I have some 30-plus years of observation of the political process. I don't want to bring that to your attention, at least what I learned about what happens. I believe sincerely that moving to districts or even a hybrid system or whatever cockamamie scheme you want to come up with that guarantees certain kinds of individuals will get elected is a bad idea. It really is a bad idea because the experience never proves to accomplish what it really was intended to accomplish, which is kind of a cruel joke on people. If you just change it by the district, then that's going to raise the possibility that we can have more minority candidates assured that more than likely they'll be elected. Those kinds of subtle guarantees that get built into this district kind of system is a bad situation. It's a bad situation because of what it does to the community as well. I witnessed for years and years
You have 10 seconds.
The trading of votes, the you vote for this and I'll vote for that. If it's not in my district, I don't want to know anything about it. Who speaks for the whole? I will try. Who speaks for the whole community? What are those kinds of issues that are going to come out as a result of some kind of whole, some kind of district representative election?
Thank you.
Madam, may I like to ask Mr. Tedesco a question?
Sure. Mr. Tedesco has a question for you.
You were city manager of San Jose, right?
Yes.
Was that a district or an at-large city?
Yes.
It was a district?
At the time, I think it was, it was kind of a hybrid system, but there was a lot of mechanism that went into assuring that certain kinds of areas were guaranteed ethnic candidates. So it was mostly a district election process.
And your feeling as a city manager was that that wasn't working to the benefit of the city as a whole?
It didn't work. It didn't work. It wasn't that it wasn't working. It didn't work because minorities would come in with genuine needs. We went through modeled cities. We went through allocation schemes, budget schemes, to try to take care of some of the areas and some of the social issues that had to be dealt with at that time. And the problem simply was that it always took a majority of the city council to do it, and the expectations were always high, and then, for some reason or another, mostly just political salient around on the back thing of you do this and I'll do that, it wouldn't be accomplished. And their frustrations become so high that it was more difficult in the final analysis to have to give them these lessons about democracy. And if you don't have a majority, you're not going to automatically get these allocations or your rec center or a new library or street stuff. It was a, I call it a cruel joke
All right.
Because it is a joke. It doesn't, these people do want the service. And the question I had was, are you people not doing a good job? Do you actually feel personally that you're not representing the community, all aspects of the community? So to contrive some kind of charter-based system that tries to do that, I'm just telling you, after 35 years or so, it ain't going to work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Wayne Scholes will be followed by Mickey Flax.
Before my time starts, I'd like to say that was the longest two minutes I've ever seen in my life, and I hope I get at least half that amount of time
He was answering a
to say what I'd like to say.
He was answering a question, so if there's a question, you'll have
Okay. We need to remember
There you go.
that the Constitution of the United States starts with "we, the people." We have elections because the people are supposed to be deciding who governs them. I don't understand what the problem is by allowing the public to decide in an election whether or not they want district elections, regional elections, at-large elections. The will of the public should overpower the will of any politician, any city administrator, or any attorney. This town already experiences a lot of cover-ups by the city administrator and the previous city attorney and the mayor and the district attorney's office against citizens who bring up issues. We need to have these elections, in my opinion, because we need to eliminate the amount of money it takes to win an election in this town. When I ran for mayor last time, I was excluded from certain forums because it didn't fit their agenda for the people at that meeting to hear what I had to say. That's channeling. By having the elections changed so it's district, you're going to have people, I think, are going to vote for people who have done things in their neighborhood, not people who have been bought by people outside their neighborhoods. And I think it's ridiculous for anybody to think, and I don't think anybody sitting up there at the council or the mayor, because of the neighborhood they live in, are only going to be concerned about that neighborhood. I think what people are sick and tired of is that issues are brought up and the problems in neighborhoods, and we get nothing done about it. in neighborhoods, and we get nothing done about it, or we're told that it's not effective, it's not cost-effective. Reports have shown that this doesn't work, and then the next thing we know, it's down in the tourist zone along Cabrillo. The tourists do not vote in this town. They might bring money here, but the people that live here are the ones that should be allowed to decide what kind of elections we have. This is a democracy. This is not an oligarchy. It's not a dictatorship.
Thank you.
Even though we have some people who would love it to be that way.
Thank you, Mr. Scholes. Mickey Flax, and is David Pritchett in the room? Okay. So Mr. Pritchett's yielding his time to Ms. Flax, so you have up to four minutes.
Thank you. I think the first question that has to be dealt with is whether we have racial polarization voting in Santa Barbara. Is a protected class prohibited from electing one of its own to be on the city council? I think that's generally what racial polarization means. Not simply whether a particular group or area votes differently than the others, but what are the consequences of that? So yes, there's no question that Latino voters on the Lower East Side vote, on the whole, differently than people in the golden arc. However, there have been a goodly number of Latino candidates elected to the city council by voters not only from the Lower East Side, but voters from every precinct in the city. Kathy Murillo is our latest example of that. She got votes, majority votes, from many, most of the precincts in the entire city. That, I think ipso facto shows it's not racial polarization. Secondly, what is at stake is what kind of voters, how many voters are turning out. And there is no question that turnout for everybody, all classes, all races, all religions, turnout is lower in primary elections than in a general election. So if we are indeed serious about extending democracy, about getting more people involved in the electoral process, about getting more people to run for office as well as vote, it seems to me that whatever change we make must be accompanied by a shift to voting in odd, in even numbered years. I think that is absolutely critical, and any other changes without that is hypocritical. The third point that I think is crucial, and it hasn't been dealt with really at all, is how are the districts to be drawn, and by what standards? For the districts to be drawn simply by members of the city council, would I believe enrage most of the people in the city. They would feel that the city council members were being self-serving in terms of their future political agenda, and it would not be seen as an impartial, good-government kind of thing. So I think the first thing is that it should not be done by the city council. The second thing is who should do it? One possibility is for a blue-ribbon commission to be named, composed of citizens who truly represent the ethnic, the political, and the economic panoply of folks that we have in the city. That's one possibility. Another is to have a panel of, say, retired judges, people of high-standing community with experience in dealing with the rules and regulations of democracy. But I think under no circumstances should it be done by the city council. We do not have, in this city, anybody by the name of Jerry Mandar. And we don't want him here, and we don't want the hint of his being here, and it is very, he can very easily sneak in, and we have to be very aware of that, I believe.
You have 30 seconds.
So in general, if this is to go on the ballot, it must go with, with moving the elections to even-numbered years, and with some idea, if not on the ballot, at least with a discussion, that people are clear of how the commission that draws the lines can exclude Jerry Mandar.
Thank you. May I ask a question? Yep. You have a que, Ms. Flax, we have a question for you.
Ms. Flax. Do you, do you remember how the county cho, didn't the county use a commission-
I was involved very much in the county redistricting, and it's a little different because it's sort of just the opposite. It has as equal population, the number-one thing, but it also has natural boundaries as a consideration. But it does have the concept of community of interest. It recognizes, especially in counties large as this, but this is state law for all counties, that people who live, say, on the coast have a, have a commonality of interest, whether they live in Area A or Area B, that's different from the relationship that they have with their neighbors to the east. And that commonality of interest is recognized in the drawing of boundaries. In addition, in the county, we were careful, every time a line was drawn, it's a wonderful program, on the computer would pop up the number of people in that projected district and the number of Latinos in that projected district.
Okay. Okay, but let me focus, because I, could we choose the commissioners, or, so you're saying that, that we, we might be accused of having self-interest? How did the county choose their commission?
Well, that was done, that was part of the statewide thing where it was-
Oh, okay.
-I think the legislature did it. I'm not sure how it was-
I guess we could figure that out.
People applied, and I think the legislature made the decision, but they didn't draw the boundaries.
Now, that was a supermesorial vote.
Those people only decided on the process. The people who drew the boundaries were ultimately the board of supervisors themselves, but it was a year-long process involving both the experts on the computer nicks and the public. There were meetings and workshops all over the county inviting the public to come and draw your own boundaries, see what you think, see how you can do it.
Thank you.
I appreciate that process. Yeah, thank you.
Question.
Mr. Hotchkiss. Ms. Flax?
Ms. Flax. Hi. I gather from all you said that overriding would be the thought that this is not something one should rush into.
I think so. I mean, because I do think that it requires community involvement in order for there to be community buy-in to the whole process. Let's face it, politicians don't have such a very high rating nowadays, even if they're not in Congress. And for politicians to be dealing with their own political futures without mega-participation of the community, I think would result in resentment.
Well, one thing that makes what you say absolutely true is that the results of what we did would, in fact, give us an extra year in office. That could be looked at askance for sure, and has been in the past, so-
It could be.
I take your warning well. Thank you.
Thank you. Isaac Garrett will be followed by Cruzito Herrera Cruz.
Madam Mayor and members of council, I want to thank you for the opportunity for us to be able to address this issue. I am in favor of district elections, and for a number of reasons. I believe that if you really want to have true representation, you need to be able to hold your elected officials accountable. I know that it's been said that you have seven representatives instead of just one, that it works. It does not work. I know, because I have, on certain occasions, contacted council members and the mayor, and some of you sitting at that table know that I did regarding certain issues. I got no response from four of the members, got a response from two council members on one occasion, and the mayor. Other occasions, I was told, "We'll get back to you." That's been over three years ago, so I guess you're still doing your research. I know that district elections will not solve all of the problems in Santa Barbara. No system will. But I also believe it will give people the sense that their vote counts. I have ran for office. I have knocked on the doors. I have called people, and I know what they said to me. I know what they told me the reason why. They were no longer voting. They weren't interested in the system anymore because it didn't represent them. And I'm not just talking about straight and minority groups. I'm talking about groups all across this city, because like I says, I've been out there. I knocked on the doors. I talked to the people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cruzito Herrera Cruz will be followed by Bonnie Raisen.
Good evening. Good to talk. Bonjour. Quali yowali. Buenas tardes a todos. My name is Cruzito Herrera Cruz. I stand for six districts, one at-large mayor proposal. I stand with the District Committee for District-Based Elections in Santa Barbara. I'm very happy that the city council has taken the position to go ahead and try to legislate this. We have to look at equality of population under Elections Code 21,500. We have to look at the criterias of topography, geography, cohesiveness, and the community of interests. Why is that important? Santa Barbara is a racially polarized community. Because Murillo has been elected doesn't mean we have won the war, or won the political battle. We thank her. But we need a reflection of three city council members. If the population is 45% of the city council, of our population that is not represented, there's a disequity. I am glad that I have brought this issue under the California Voting Rights Act, 14,025 and 14,026. We do live in a racially polarized voting community. Since the early 1960s, this information was sent by the law firm of Capello, Barry Capello, that shows that we live in a racially polarized community. These are the rosters of all the city council elections since the 1960s to the present. If you look at this, we would know that we're in a racially polarized community. We look at the argument of the con against why we shouldn't have district-based elections, a balkanization. It's a fallacy. It isn't scientific, nor is it a social study that has been generated. This is just an idea. I think the matter of saying the con of a balkanization is not accurate, is not reflective of what it means of not having representation from a historical perspective in our community. We're already 45% of the population, thus they're 50% if we consider that citizens that don't have residency, nor their citizenships. We want representation for them, too.
Thank you.
In that, I thank you. Please legislate six to one, or else you will be sued.
Bonnie Raisen will be followed by Milt Hess.
Good evening. My name is Bonnie Raisen, and I want to thank you very much for bringing this meeting together. It's very gratifying. Many of us in this room have hoped for this day for a long, long time. Grassroots efforts, that's sort of a slogan, I guess, but I still like the sound of it. Single-member districting is not only about ethnic origin or political points of view that need to be included in governance. It is about the very basic needs of each and every citizen in the city and their right to continual items such as street maintenance, clean gutters and sidewalks, adequate lighting, safety, and the knowledge that their councilperson lives in their neighborhood, who can take the concerns of his constituents to City Hall. I hope I don't hear the word cronyism tonight. I already have. It is not a valid excuse for setting aside the positive impact that single-member districting would have on Santa Barbara, block by block, and the opportunity for many to run a campaign in an area where he or she is known and whose integrity, or lack of it, is also known to his neighbors and constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Milt Hess will be followed by Lanny Ebenstein.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of city council and staff. We have a good example of balkanization right here in Santa Barbara County, and that is the County Board of Supervisors. Witness the conflicts between the North County and South County Supervisors. Although the members of our city council represent diverse viewpoints, I feel that the decisions that you make focus on what's best for the city as a whole, and I would hate to see the city regress to such a balkanized approach as we see in the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you. Lanny Ebenstein will be followed by Lucas Zucker.
Mayor Schneider, members of the council. As I see it, you really face two issues. One is the issue of even-year election, and the other is the issue of district elections. And I think that if there's a move toward district elections, which I believe the city is going to be required to do one way or the other, I believe that's the conclusion that can be drawn from your city attorney's report, that, that the city should also move at the same time to even-year elections. And the reason is because, take for example, the next city council race when there are three seats up, but no mayor. If you had all districts, that would mean only half the city would vote, and I think that that would be systemically unsustainable. So, because that would be every other election. So it seems to me that the two are conjoined. I would encourage you to consider, continue this discussion and, and see if something could be placed on this November ballot. I, I think there should probably be two, two separate proposals, amendments. And, and I would encourage you to have a report back on the 17th of June rather than the 24th, because then if there are changes in it and that sort of thing, the council would be in a position to consider that rather than having to make every change at the last meeting, and if something has to be redone, can it be noticed and all that kind of stuff. So I think that these are really important issues for the city of Santa Barbara. Mr. Hardin, earlier meeting, said he thought everyone here was acting in goodwill. I, I think that's true. I think there are differences as to what would be the best form of representation in the future. I'm a strong advocate of district elections, a six-one system. Thank you.
Lucas Zucker will be followed by Jaclyn Inda.
Thank you. My name is Lucas Zucker. I'm a researcher with CAWS, formerly known in Santa Barbara as Pueblo. A core foundation of CAWS's work is to increase civic engagement and political representation for underrepresented communities. We talk to tens of thousands of voters in these communities every election, work to improve Latino representation in the 2011 redistricting, do voter registration drives, candidate forums, and training for community members who want to run for office. In Santa Maria, we've been campaigning for district elections. However, in the city of Ventura in Santa Barbara, we believe by far the biggest barrier to fair representation is local elections being held on odd-numbered years when voter turnout is abysmally low in working-class immigrant neighborhoods. There have always been wide disparities in voter turnout between Santa Barbara's white and Latino neighborhoods, but the gap widens dramatically during odd-year elections. In last year's city council election, the highest voter turnout precinct voted at 50%, while the lowest voted at only 28%. This means that in odd-year elections, some neighborhoods literally have half the voice that others do. Ventura placed a measure on the ballot for this November to move to even-year elections, which is widely expected to pass. This may leave the Santa Barbara City Council as the lone elected body in the region to use this outdated, costly, inefficient, and unfair system of odd-year elections. The council should ask itself, is this really about doing whatever's necessary to create an active and inclusive democracy, or just about avoiding a lawsuit? If we're truly serious about ensuring fair representation for all communities, the real issue is moving to even-year elections. Addressing districts alone while leaving the larger problem untouched will not be enough to solve Santa Barbara's representation problem. Any reform placed on the ballot must also include even-year elections. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. At the council meeting we had a few weeks ago, we have a representative from CAWS saying that they actually opposed having district elections here in Santa Barbara. Is that still CAWS's position in Santa Barbara?
I'm sorry, I think there may have been a miscommunication before. We've, we've never been opposed to district elections in Santa Barbara, but we believe the more important barrier is, is odd-year.
So is, does CAWS have a position of whether the city of Santa Barbara should go to a district election model or not?
No, we're currently not supporting or opposing.
I'm sorry? Say that again?
We're currently not supporting or opposing district elections in Santa Barbara.
You're neutral on the issue?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jaclyn Inda will be followed by Sebastian Aldana.
My name's Jaclyn Inda, and I'm here with a nonpartisan group called the Community for Neighborhood Alliance and District Elections. We stand for many different things. But I am here as a person who is born in Santa Barbara- And a person who stands for citizens of protected class, of which I am part of. I'm also here as a handful of many conservative council, trying about trying to agenda, create some changes that would better impact their neighborhood.
I'm sorry, I'm going to pause just for the cameras. I don't think the mic- I don't think the mic is working. Want to make sure people who are... Make sure that green light stays on.
Okay.
Okay. Go ahead.
Now I have to remember everything I said, right?
Sorry, just keep going. You can just keep going. I just want to make sure that the rest of your comments... Why don't you start over? Why don't you start? Okay.
Okay.
Why don't you start over? I'll put it back to two minutes. Go ahead.
The Community Neighborhood Alliance Group for District Elections. This is a group that I'm here representing, and we are a nonpartisan group. I'm a part of that group because I was born in Santa Barbara. I am one of those protected-class citizens that people talk about in these kinds of groups. I was also born and raised in Santa Barbara in a very impoverished neighborhood. I've come in front of you for City Council many times to try to address systemic changes that will positively impact my neighborhoods. As our alliance starts to form together, we come together to talk about district voting. We also stand for six City Council members represented by districts, not four districts, but by districts, with one mayor at large. We're also for even-years. We also want to make sure that we give every voter the chance to stand for their neighborhood. And so, we are creating this kind of voice so that you understand that we do need these kinds of systemic changes that will better impact all of our community. The question is not if district elections. The question will really be, what will our maps look like? So, we really should spend our time as community members not really looking at the question of whether or not we should even have the conversation of district elections, because things will pan out that way anyway. What we should be talking about is even-years and looking at those maps and involving our community and trying to make sure that, like most peoples have said here, that it's not gerrymandered and that we can work together as a community to better impact everybody in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Sebastian Aldana will be followed by Jason Colbert.
Hello, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Sebastian Aldana. Today, I'm here as an Eastside resident and property taxpayer. I do support district elections 100 percent, six districts and one mayor, six-one. Let the neighborhoods decide. Somehow, somewhere, I have worked with all of you regarding some type of neighborhood issue. As the districts get divided, I honestly feel that all of you will keep your sheets. When we go with districts, please keep district elections and even-years, even-year voting separate. Do not comingle, please, on those two. I am for district representation. If we had district representation, I feel we would not have close to the 20 million in unfunded traffic and pedestrian safety improvements in the Eastside. That's my personal feeling. I would like to end by saying that this is not a Latino, Chicano, Mexican issue. This is a Santa Barbara issue. It is a proper neighborhood representation issue. Once again, six-one. Let the neighborhoods decide.
Jason Culver will be followed by Sheila Lodge. And then, the final speaker will be Robin Morris.
Hello, City Council and everybody, folks here. My name is Jason Colbert. I'm from Santa Barbara. I was born here almost 44 years ago. I look at, like, you know, Mayor Schneider, I really liked you when you got elected, but I just don't seem now that... I've tried calling you, been to your office several times. I don't think you seem to hear, you've heard me or anything like that. I think we need to really listen to the people. I don't think we're listening to the people, because, you know, I spoke with City Administrator Jim Armstrong on the phone. I had my car took away by the police seven years ago, and I think this is having this gentleman here, when he ran for City Council, a lot of other people, Isaac Garrett, Wayne Scholes. I think that we really need to listen to the people, not just the rich people, and I think that we're not doing that. I think we could have a better city if we listened to the people, rich, poor, whatever color you are. I don't think this is a race issue. I think it's about money. I really do think that... I've been to your office several times, Ms. Mayor, and I've never... I called you recently. I didn't hear back from you. I've spoke with the mayors of Long Polk, other cities, Solvain. You know, I remember Marty Blummer wrote her a letter. I met Harriet Miller in the 90s. We need to listen to the people that are here, not just the rich people, people of all walks of life. And I think we need to really start doing it, and I think we could really work a lot better. We have... The police department's out of control. We need a new police chief. We need that a long time desperately. We need to listen to the people. There's been too much negative things happening, lawsuits. I mean, something's wrong here. There's a lot of homes. We need to do something about that. We need to get more business-friendly with small businesses. This is a beautiful city, but it needs to be ran right. You know, it has to be ran right. People need to listen to the people. If they don't do that, we've lost the war, you know? This is a beautiful city. Like I said, we need to run it right. We need to listen to the people, you know? Mr. Armstrong, I wrote you, emailed you, said it was a waste of city's time.
10 seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sheila Lodge.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the Council. Good evening. I'm Sheila Lodge. As a result of the settlement of a lawsuit, Modesto changed from at-large elections to district elections in 2009. I decided to call and find out what difference this had made. Five of the current Council members are white and two are Latino. I called the mayor's office to ask if the council had been lily-white before the change. As a result of explaining why I was calling, I had a chat with the mayor's secretary, who turned out to be a Latina. She was disappointed with the shift. She believes Latinos now have less influence than they did when they could vote for all the council members. And she asked, why would anyone give up their right to vote for all council candidates for just one? When I spoke with the mayor, he told me that the Modesto City Council had been male, pale, and stale, and he himself was male and pale. Santa Barbara's history is quite different. The city had ward or district elections for 45 years. In 1968, the voters changed it to the current at-large election. It is said that a district system would provide for greater opportunity for minority representation on the council, and that has not been the case in Santa Barbara. Under the ward system or district system, there was one Latino elected to the City Council over, that's 46 years, 45 years. In contrast, over the 45 years of the at-large system, four Latinos and one Black have been elected to the Santa Barbara City Council. More people have run for council than ran before. I've compared voter turnout in Santa Barbara with turnout in cities and districts. It is higher in Santa Barbara. Perhaps more choice is the reason. I think the present system serves the community well. It works. Minority candidates get elected. Santa Barbara is small enough for every council member to know the city well and to represent all of its citizens.
Thank you.
As Modesto's Latina secretary asks, why would anybody give up their right to vote for all the council members?
Thank you very much.
Okay. I urge...
We got it. We got the point. Thank you. Robin Morris.
Hello. I've introduced myself before. My name is Robin Morris. This proposed hybrid at-large system seems to promote a concentration of powers. No other systems are at-large. There are districts for a reason to represent people to where their vote will be heard, not drowned out or watered down by a high population. Imagine if there were five City Council members that were neighbors. This idea will be another costly suit if this were to pass, after just finishing another costly suit today, to which I am referring to the gang injunction, that is also, that also is setting boundaries in Santa Barbara for more concentrated powers. What about a congressional race? Would you find it difficult to gain all your votes, all the votes from California for a seat? Sorry, hold on.
You have one minute left.
Okay, thanks. Could you imagine if the Board of Supervisors, State Assembly, or Senate, or congressional seats were elected at-large? Would you believe that at-large elections in these offices would be appropriate? Of course not. Why would it be okay in the city, then? Please consider the foundation of our country and what it means to be represented. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the public comment period. I neglected earlier to ask if there was any public comment on items not on today's agenda that's purview to the city. Just want to make sure if that's covered. Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't call for general public comment, so I feel like I need to do that in a public meeting, so I just want to make sure if there was... I didn't get any speaker slips. That's why I didn't... Mr. Scholes, if you'd like to... You have two minutes. Go ahead. Come on up, Mr. Scholes. You have two minutes.
Yes, I'd like to bring up another issue that I brought up during the election, and that's this higher density that some people are trying to push in Santa Barbara. I don't think most of the citizens in Santa Barbara want us to look like Santa Monica or the beaches of Florida, or South Carolina, or Georgia. They don't want us to look like New York. We want to retain the lifestyle that we have here, and I think these elections, if they were district...
You need to keep away from the district election piece. This is general public comment. Thank you.
Okay. I kept saying with this higher-density housing, we can't afford to have it because we need to live within our resources. The mayor said we have one good year of water left. We can draw groundwater. We are in our third year of drought, and it's worse now than it was in our previous seven-year drought, because it's a statewide drought. We are not going to get state water. We need to wake up. We need to live within our means. Higher density means higher use on our sewer systems, our water systems, our roads, everything else. You cannot build enough properties here in Santa Barbara to eliminate the traffic on the freeway. That's called expanding population. I'm 100 percent against higher-density housing, because I've lived here 40 years, and I've seen what's happened to the roads and the lifestyle when we keep building, building, building. We elected, or voted, excuse me, we voted, I think it was in the early 80s, to have a population cap in Santa Barbara, because a study was done that showed that the standard of living and the quality of life would degrade as the population gets higher. We cannot just open up our city to continually grow when we have limited resources, and water is the number-one resource that we have to look at. Societies and cultures throughout history have collapsed because of the lack of water. Just because we live in the 21st century does not mean we're any different than anybody else.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Cruz.
Muchas gracias, Madam Mayor. Voy a hablar en español para las personas que están viendo los teliventes. Yo soy Cruzito Herrera Cruz. Yo estoy en favor de los distritos de seis uno. Pero estamos aquí porque estamos hablando de la representación política que no tenemos en el dais.
It sounds like district elections to me.
Estoy hablando de la medida judicial del gang injunction. Ahorita estoy hablando sobre los puntos, sobre the civil amendment to prevent a public nuisance in our community that's being held. Closing arguments have been held in the Superior Court of California. The reason for such policies and negative policies is the lack of representation in our community. The communities are blighted under health and safety codes. The lack of affordable housing, the lack of positive policies to form empowerment, opportunity, positiveness, healing, equity is important. The gang injunction, with the statistics that the city has based of 537 members, quote-unquote, the new scarlet letter of today, we have to realize as a constitutionalist and someone that believes in the Constitution that this is an invasion and an abridgement to their rights. Whether it was one person who was the worst of the worst, that person still deserves the right to be looked after in a positive way and not in a negative way or pessimistic way. Como le estaba diciendo, o si era una persona en esa medida, no si tiene que proyectar algo negativo, si tiene que dar recursos, algo positivo, si tiene que sanar, tiene que tener oportunidades de recursos de la ciudad. Porque, o si la ciudad no está haciendo su trabajo, pues tenemos que gobernar otra forma de política en nuestra ciudad. Muchas gracias. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. All right. I don't want the whole room to... You know, but go ahead, Ms. Flax. Is there anyone else? Speak it now or forever hold your peace on public comment? All right, Mrs. Flax will be the last speaker for public comment. Go ahead.
I spent the day today and most of this week in the courtroom on the gang injunction, and I just want to offer my public thanks to the Public Defender's Office of the County of Santa Barbara. They did a masterful job for very little pay. Their suits were a lot shabbier than the suits of the district attorneys. And it was very instructive to me. I was a witness, and there were about 10 of us, community members, who were witnesses. All of us said pretty much the same thing, that we did not feel endangered on the streets of Santa Barbara by gangs or homeless or anybody else. It is interesting to note that there was not a single community member of any kind on the district attorney's side. It was only police officers, former police officers, and district attorneys from other jurisdictions. The community was not behind this, and I hope that the community will be mobilized to be behind what we have been discussing today.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes all public comment. It's back to the Council. Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question for Mr. Cologne. Mr. Cologne, procedurally, in order to change the election, be it district or be it odd-even-years, is it done by a vote of the people? Is that the only way to do that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, yes.
And if, for example, it does go on a ballot, district elections, and the people decide that is not what we want to do, we want to stay at-large, have we then done our due diligence? Or are we still in the weeds in terms of the issue in the state of California?
I'm not sure I follow your...
In other words, are we still exposed to the same litigation risk that we are today? If the people choose to retain the at-large system, does it change our exposure to, for example, Mr. Capello's lawsuit?
Let me answer it this way. Regardless of what the voters do, the courts have the remedial power to impose district elections under the California Voting Rights Act.
So, if, for example, the people decide to not vote in favor of district elections, the court can override that and place upon us the task of creating the districts and the task of forming this new election system?
Yes, if there is racially polarized voting.
And once again, the burden proof is this... I'm having trouble with the chicken-egg part of it because of the balloting. That's done on a basis of strictly census, the demography, or is it done on results, on an exit poll? Or how do we... I'm still struggling with that definition.
Yeah, it's based on statistical analysis that allows an expert to come up with an opinion that the minority voters would have preferred to have voted differently than the majority voters. So, it's called ecological regression analysis. I don't know much about it. I have contacted an expert in the area, and I could make that person available if the Council wanted to get more details about how the statistics work. What I have said is that, given the percentage of Hispanic and Latino residents in the 2010 census, the city of Santa Barbara may have a more difficult time showing that there is not racially polarized voting.
Thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss and Ms. Maria.
How is the Latino appellation established?
I'm not sure I know. I do know that the distinction that the census draws between Hispanic and Latino derives from European origin versus Latin American origin.
So, how does one tell that? If my name is Guerrero, it could be from Spain, or it could be from Mexico.
I think it's done by self-identification in the census.
By what?
Self-identification in the census.
I see, all right.
Ms. Maria.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think this is a question for Mr. Armstrong. So, if we switch to even-year elections, we would consolidate with the county, and would the city save money?
Yes, we would. It costs us about $300,000, $200,000 to $300,000 for our odd-numbered elections. The last I recall, the quote we got from the county was it would be around $60,000 or so if we went even, but that was from a few years ago.
And are there any added costs if we go to district elections?
Yes, I... There would be... The cost of the election would probably go up from that number I just quoted you, because you've got to have... number I just quoted you, because you've got to have the districts, and everyone would be a separate ballot. I assume you'd probably have a few more candidates, so the candidate statement would be, wouldn't be a huge amount more, but I think the cost would definitely be higher than, you know, versus if we had, we went to even-numbered elections and went with the county, it'd be slightly higher.
Okay. Well, I don't like being threatened to be sued, and I would hope that, and I'm calling you out, Mr. Herrera, that there's no need for that. But I want to know, I am interested in avoiding a lawsuit, just as I'm interested in having a much more robust community discussion on these issues. That was terribly interesting to me, that ranked voting, that sounds like, if it's been working in San Francisco, that sounds like something that we should explore more. I don't think the group here, or the rest of the community, I'll speak for myself, I want to know more about that. And Ms. Flax, you did make a point about there needing to be more time to sort of sift through all of these issues. I don't want the city to get sued. I don't want us to spend our taxpayer money on that. If there's another way to get to a diverse representation on our city council, and where the neighborhoods feel like they're being responded to, so I'm afraid to ask the question, how do we avoid a lawsuit? I'm going to ask it, how do we avoid a lawsuit?
Madam Mayor, Mayor Potem Mario, the only sure-fire way to avoid a lawsuit under the California Voting Rights Act is to propose district elections to the voters, and have them successfully approved by the voters.
Thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss and Mr. White?
I'd like to focus on your use of the word sure-fire. For instance, if it was not found to be racially polarized, that would make our case a lot stronger, should we choose to remain with district elections, correct?
The plaintiffs bringing a voting rights lawsuit have to prove there is racially polarized voting, so you're correct.
All right. So, because I think some people will interpret what you said as we don't have a choice, and I want to be clear that we do. There may be risk involved, undoubtedly there is, but principles that are worth it are worth fighting for, so I'm not personally ready to jump into this, even from what you've said. I want to take a lot more longer look at it, and perhaps, at your suggestion, I'll be able to talk to the statistical analysts, or somebody with knowledge like that, so can, we in the public can better understand what we're getting into.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That, Mr. Hotchkiss was kind of starting down the path that I wanted to pursue a little bit. Could the city undertake this statistical analysis with, to ascertain whether we have this problem, or have this polarization going on or not? Figuring we could, right?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, yes.
Have you seen that done, and has a city undertaken that?
Yeah, I think I included in the materials that the City of Turlock is going through that process right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
Well, I guess, this is a complicated issue, because, for one thing, last election cycle, we had a candidates' forum in this room, where all the candidates that were running were asked to talk about district elections, the only subject on the agenda for that forum. And all of us stated our opinion clearly, and we're here elected, and, you know, my opinion at that time was that I was not a supporter of district elections. It seems odd for me to change my opinion based on the fact that we're being threatened by a lawsuit. I don't feel comfortable doing that at all. That's a reality, though, it's been clearly stated by people. I think that's a terrible way to do public policy. I think that the consequence of that, you know, and from a financial impact to the city is unconscionable. I think that that's against the tradition that we have in making decisions in this community, and I think that the proper way to be having this is the way that it historically has been, where citizens get signatures on a petition, they put something on the ballot, and the voters decide. And so this whole system where that would even occur, the voters would decide, and a court would overturn that, is even more frustrating. The other fact of the matter is that odd-year elections have far fewer voters. It's just a simple fact, and I think that everybody is interested in having more voters participate in city elections. So to me, that's kind of a no-brainer, that we ought to have even-year elections. So I don't know how we're going to get from here to there. I certainly don't think there's enough time between now and June 24th to come to a consensus on this at all. And I think that the simple fact of knowing about, you know, the racial, the reality of an analysis of racially polarized voting in the city probably is a fact that we need to have in this discussion. So I think that's where I sit with this today.
So I'll just, I was at that forum as well, and thought about district elections a lot, obviously since then, and since coming to today. Couple of comments. One is, it's almost, doesn't matter per se what my personal opinion is, if it's a charter amendment by the voters, so putting something on the ballot if there are other reasons to do so, I don't see that as contradicting my personal opinion, for other reasons that I agree with you 110% how frustrating the situation is. I will say, one, something I didn't say at that forum, and I've thought about more, is, you know, I might live in one neighborhood, but I enjoy and participate in the entire city. And, you know, issues that come about in the entire city, I care about, because it's not, I may not reside there, but I go there, or I visit there, or there's just other parts that are important to me just as much as the place where my home happens to be. So there's a lot of conversations here. I guess the question for the council is, do we put something on that doesn't necessarily mean we're endorsing it? All it means is that we're putting something on the November ballot, or not. And if the answer's no, what I'm hearing is perhaps we need to do some analysis that would require time on the city attorney's part, or other departments perhaps, and the city administrator's office, about looking into this issue of if. And I think it's a big if, to be honest, whether there's racially polarized voting in the City of Santa Barbara, just given the higher voter turnout we've seen in other cities. Yes, our odd-year election was less than what you've seen even-year elections, however, I think we were the highest voter turnout in the city, in the state of California, that had an election, a standalone city election in the state of California last November. So people are engaged, they're involved, so that kind of analysis may be necessary, but I don't see those things necessarily as mutually exclusive. I could see a potential of putting the district issue, a 6-1, on the November ballot, continue the discussion, see what the voters say. Meanwhile, that's going to include an analysis of all the questions that we've had here. So, you know, I'm just as frustrated as everyone else on the issue, but I think at least we need to, there's some questions that probably should be answered in one way or another. Ms. Mario?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to suggest that the city council appoint an ad hoc committee to meet with the committee. Jacqueline Enda, thank you for coming up, you were well-spoken, and I know what your committee believes, but you weren't threatening, and you were talking about what our community needs. And I see your point, because when this first came up, I was weighing the, because there's pros and cons, we saw them, on district elections. And when I walk my neighborhood going door-to-door, I'm so connected to the families, and the kids, and their dogs, and their issues, and I see the benefit of district elections. And people have evoked the gang injunction tonight, and had we had direct representatives in the safety zones, perhaps that city council member would have convened some community meetings, and the issues would have been filtered, and talked about with the community, and brought back to the bigger council. I would miss talking to people, because I live on the West Side, I assume I would be a West Side representative, that I would miss talking to people in San Roque, but I wouldn't close my door to them, I want to hear what they have to say. So there's a lot of benefits to district elections that I don't think got a lot of airing here tonight. For instance, that it would cost less money. I had to raise $88,000 to get elected. That's obscene in the world where we want, no wonder people are cynical, and disconnected from their city council, if that's the case. So I'd like to talk more about the benefit of district elections, because I'm moving in that direction, based on what, you have forced me to look on the bright side. And what if we had an ad hoc committee that met with the committee, and we stopped talking about lawsuits so that there's no animosity, and put together a plan of community outreach, and see where we can go with that, and engage the community? You have representatives from a lot of different neighborhoods here, I can see in different interests, and I like it, I like the faces that I see out there, and I would assume this would become the core of people who would be engaged and participate in the discussion. So that would be my proposal.
Comments on that? Mr. White, or other comments?
Well, just comments. It seems to me that the, one of the core pieces of this is this issue of, this question of polarization. Is that, and we can get some sort of objective analysis of that. So that's a piece that we need, do we have, do we have this as an issue or not? And so that's one place where it's important for us to go. I mean, we've got this sort of external force that Mr. Hart spoke to, and that of forcing the city to look at things differently than we might otherwise, that it isn't going through the initiative process that Mr. Hart spoke about, it's going through, basically, it's a top-down push there. But the statistical analysis is something that we can go forward with. And so I think Mr. Hotchkiss was suggesting, having that person come in, at least start that avenue. Let's find out whether there's an issue on that front, and then that will be at least one piece of evidence, a very strong one, guiding us on what we need to be doing. And that would help everybody understand whether we've got a polarization issue or not.
Mr. Cologne, hearing the comments, can you envision a process about some kind of conversation and analysis, and what that might entail?
Yes, I can, Madam Mayor. The, there, we could begin with a presentation from a demographic expert to the council to frame the issues a little more clearly than I have, and then we could engage the same expert to do the regression analysis, to determine whether there is racially polarized voting going on in Santa Barbara.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. White.
And I think it's important that if we're doing, we're undergoing this effort to understand whether this is an issue or not, on a statistical level, that that's something that the community can see, that we are doing our due diligence on this issue. And I think that's an important facet of this. We're not just, as Ms. Flax was saying, we're not just doing a statistical gerrymander. We are looking for the truth here, and fairness here. And that definitely is, I just have a feeling that we're all on that plane, and this is one way to get there. So that sounds like at least one step that could work.
Thank you. Ms. Mario, and then Mr. Hotchkiss.
I just wanted to make the point that we haven't had enough Latino representation on the city council, and that is an important factor that district elections is likely to solve, and that's what your presentation said. So I really, I would like to push for a vote this November, to put it to the people. I heard you, Wayne Scholes, you're nice and loud, you said, "Leave it to the people," but it would be, I would hate to put it on the ballot, and then we're sort of halfway about it, the city council. I don't think any of us should work against it, we should have an open mind, that's why I was calling for the ad hoc committee. So where I stand tonight is that we put something on the ballot this November, yes or no? We devise a way to tell the electorate how we would appoint a commission, and devise boundaries, so that they have some sense that we are planning ahead, and then have conversations with the committee, with our ad hoc committee. I'm hoping someone will support my idea.
So you're saying yes to something this November, and?
Yes.
So yes, and?
Yes, and.
Okay. I'll just, just one comment you made, which I guess would be part of the analysis. I don't know automatically, without the analysis, whether district elections would automatically increase diversity on this council. I think that's the whole point, is to find that out. And just to say, district elections equals more Latinos on the council, I think there are some areas in the state where that may be the case, I just don't know if that's the case here without the analysis. So it's, I don't want to make that foregone conclusion. But, Mr. Hotchkiss and Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, rather than have an opinionated electorate, which I think we have now, I'd rather have an informed one, where we are all better in understanding where we really stand on this issue. So I would move that we, as soon as possible, get the kind of analyst that you're talking about to come before the city council and the public, and then decide from that point where we go next. Because right now, we have strong opinions, but not a lot of information, and of the two, information is more important.
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Rouse?
A quick question for Mr. Cologne. So following up on the litmus test of how we are not exposed to further legal action, and we do, in fact, you said before that the sure way to avoid it is to actually have a district election, but the district election results are not what the intention of this entire movement is. In other words, if there still is not the level of racial diversity that the intent is here, do they go back to ground zero, or are we covered with the district elections? I mean, this is, this is one of these bizarre things that we're being forced to look at in a way that's probably, as Mr. Hart was saying, it's probably not the right way to do public policy. But from a legal standpoint, are we still exposed if the results aren't what the intent is?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, are you referring to the results of the racially polarized voting analysis, or results of an election?
If, for example, we approve district elections, that the people vote to have those in, we have the district elections, and yet the results don't yield what the intent was in the first place.
That doesn't matter.
So that's, it's game over at that point?
Right. The Voting Rights Act would not compel any further action if you have district elections.
All right, just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
I think the issue, there's other reasons why some cities want district elections, that they can choose to have, but then there's the question of a legal issue, whether one has to have a district election. Right. So I'm hearing a motion about the "and" part of Ms. Mario's proposal, which I still think if we wanted to have another vote on the first part, we could still do so, and see where that goes, but, yes?
Do you have a motion to the second?
Yes, that's what I'm, I'm addressing, the motion. So what I'm saying is, though, that doesn't necessarily have to be the only motion made this evening, if we wanted to make other motions to go in combination with that one. Any questions on the motion?
Yeah, what is the motion?
Okay, Mr. Hotchkiss.
The motion is to get the analyst of what we're talking about on board as soon as possible, to come before the council and the public, to at least describe as much as completely as possible what they may be able to determine here in Santa Barbara.
Mr. Hotchkiss, can I ask you to amend your motion to include an ad hoc committee of us to start conversations with the activists?
No.
Okay. If this motion passes, what would be the process that you would envision moving forward in a timeline?
Madam Mayor, I heard a fairly limited motion, and that is to bring in an expert to talk with the council, not necessarily to conduct the racially polarized voting analysis. So the process would be that the city administrator and I would work with the consultant to design an appropriate forum to give you as much more information as possible. Perhaps some limited precinct review to-
Does that sound accurate to your motion? Okay, any other questions on the motion?
Well, how long will that take, do we think?
More than a month.
Less than six months?
Less than six months.
Okay.
Well, it sounds like not a bad idea, and I'll vote for it out of- Well, it sounds like not a bad idea, and I'll vote for it out of, even though you didn't agree with me.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other questions on the motion? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's, any other motions? Ms. Mario?
I, I'd like to make a motion that we form an ad hoc committee of the city council and open conversations with the committee that supports district elections in Santa Barbara.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Mr. Colon, just in terms of coordinating that, does that make sense to you? An ad hoc committee wouldn't have to be a public meeting, but I would imagine results would come back to a public hearing? Or updates?
It's legal.
Yeah, okay. Any que, okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to know. He's so, like, precise, right? Yeah. Any other questions on that motion? Mr. Hotchkiss?
Discussion, okay?
Go ahead, yes. On the motion.
Again, just to say, rather than hear one particular viewpoint about this, it would be better that we were all well-informed about what we're really talking about right now or not. So I would suggest postponing your motion until we have more information, and then we can all with greater insight discuss the real games and goals of what we're trying to do here. So I wouldn't vote for that, but I wanted you to understand why.
Okay, but I think the committee has been doing their research, and they have been presenting good ideas tonight, and I'd like to hold hands with them instead of be in an adversarial position. Let's hear what they have to say in a, in a more, in a, in an environment that invites more discussion and back and forth, and, and because Councilmember Hart seconded in my motion, maybe he would be part of the ad hoc committee. And, and you would be good at that, too, Mr. Hotchkiss, if you wanted to join us. Or, or Mr. Bendy White?
Did you, did you have something to the motion, Mr. White?
I, I'm just, I'm, all, my ears are-
Okay. And obviously, we wouldn't be appointing, if this passes, an ad hoc committee today. We'd have to come back to a future agenda and do that. So do we all understand the motion? Okay, all in favor? Aye? Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, I think that's five one.
Did it pass?
It passed. You got your ad hoc committee to be determined. Any other motions?
I'd like to move that we put it on the ballot this November, a vote for the, yes or no for district elections, a six-to-one configuration.
Okay. So the motion would be to come back to a future council meeting to have that final vote?
Thank you.
Right, just to be clear. Any, I'll second that. I, I will, I said, one thing about timing, I know someone mentioned having, if this passes, having, not, not having the only meeting being on the 24th, just so people know, I have a previously other appointment I cannot change out of town on the 17th. So, so if that conversation we need to have of the yes/no, we, I think we need all seven members, assuming if this passes, if it doesn't pass, it's a moot point, but just so everyone knows in terms of timing. Any questions on that motion?
Say that, but we need all seven members to support the, to putting it on the ballot in November, is that what you-
Well, I'm gonna, well, why don't we vote first, and then we can talk about timing? Because if it fails, then it's a moot point, so. So the, so the vote, the motion is to come back to a future council meeting within the time period required by the county to put a six-one district election vote on the November 2014 ballot. Is that correct? Okay. Any comments or questions on the motion? Mr. Hart? Are you ready to vote? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, three-three, so that fails. Okay. Anything else?
Move or adjourn?
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Colon?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so I imagine at some point soon, we'll come back to a future public council meeting to discuss both the statistical analysis and the ad hoc committee structure and timeline and members, right? Thank you very much all for being here. It was good to hear your points of view, and this meeting's adjourned.